Recording in progress.
All right, welcome everybody. We're going to bring the April 1st Planning Commissioner Meeting to order at 6 o'clock. Can we have a determination or quorum, a roll call, please?
Jim Barnes?
Here.
Michael Flick?
Here.
Lynda Kennedy said she would be on Zoom and I don't see her yet, so if she shows up, I will announce it to the public and to the Board. Dan Lazareski?
Here.
And then Commissioner Owens and Commissioner Nelson do have excused absences tonight. And then Rob Pierce?
Present.
So we do have four, so we do have a corps.
All right, thank you. Can we, can everybody please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have the ethics law announcements?
Certainly. Commissioners are reminded that if with respect to any matter or any person coming before the commission today, number one, you've received a gift or loan; number two, you have a pecuniary interest; number three, you have a commitment in a private capacity such as a family, employment, business, or similar relationship; or number four, if you've provided representation or counseling before an agency to a person or entity for compensation within the last year on a matter that's being considered here tonight, please remember to disclose that gift, loan, interest commitment, or prior representation at the time the matter is being considered. And furthermore, please remember that you must abstain from deliberation or voting on the matter if it's clear that the gift, loan, interest commitment, or prior representation would materially affect the independence of judgment of a reasonable person. Commissioners are also reminded that under your bylaws, if you've had any contact outside this meeting with any persons interested in a matter coming before the commission today, you should disclose the nature of that contact at this meeting. I'll go ahead and read the Zoom instructions. This meeting is being held in the County Commission chambers. It's also being held via Zoom. To attend the meeting via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar using the link found on the first page of the agenda. You can also join the meeting by typing zoom.us into your computer, clicking "Join a Meeting" on the Zoom website, and entering meeting ID 842-7265-9406. For those of you who may be having computer trouble, you can join the meeting via telephone only by dialing 1-669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 842-7265-9406 and press pound. For those wishing to provide public comment via Zoom, you can log into the Zoom webinar and utilize the raise hand feature during any public comment period. To provide public comment via telephone only, you can press star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute or unmute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we please have the appeal procedure, Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and qualify as an agreed person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 328-3610 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
Great, thank you. This time, I'd like to open up general public comment. Do we have any general public comment?
I have no general public comment in chambers. I have no hands raised on Zoom.
All right. We'll close that. Moving on to the approval of today's agenda. I have no changes. If everybody's okay with it, can I get a motion to accept as written, please?
So move.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Commissioner Lazareski, second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. All right, the agenda passes. Thank you. Next was number seven, approval of the March 4th minutes. I assume everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. Do we have any changes? If we don't have any changes, can I get a motion, please?
Commissioner Lazareski moved to approve the minutes as written.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Commissioner Barnes, aye, second.
All right, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Okay, moving on to the public hearing items. Item number eight, 8A, is an abandonment, case number WAB24-0008, Sweet Clover Residential Trust abandonment for possible action. Mr. Lloyd, could you please announce that?
Yeah, for hearing discussion and possible action to approve an abandonment of Washoe County's interest in two 40-foot wide government patent access easements along the northern and eastern property lines of parcel number APN 04908019, and to reduce two 40-foot wide public utility easements in the same location to 10 feet. Representing Washoe County in this matter is Senior Planner Kat Oakley.
All right, Kat, floor chairs.
For the record, Kat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. This is WAB24-0008, a residential abandonment request for the Sweet Clover Residential Trust. The request is for the abandonment of two access and public utility easements at 15870 Caswell Lane. And you can see it's south of Mount Rose Highway, right there next to Montrose, a little bit east of Bordeaux Drive. This property is about 1.25 acres, and it's surrounded by parcels that are developed with single-family homes or that are undeveloped federal land. Parcels in this area were created from, it's known as government patents, so they were created by the Small Tracks Act by the United States Congress, and as a result, all of these parcels were created with access and public utility easements around all of the borders of the original government patent parcels. Some of them, such as the subject parcel, have been subsequently subdivided, which is what resulted in the easement pattern that we see existing on the ground today. So, right now, on the subject parcel, there are 40-foot public access and utility easements along the eastern, northern, and western property boundaries. And the request is to abandon fully the northern and eastern access easements. So retaining the easement along the western portion, or the western boundary of the property, which is where Caswell Lane is currently developed, and then abandoning the two other easements which are currently undeveloped as accesses. The utility easement request is to abandon partially those same easements, but to retain 10 feet of public utility easement along the property line for the utility companies. So to get into the evaluation, we're going to start by talking about the northern access easement. So, right now, the, as I said, there are the two easements, or really three easements around the boundary of the subject parcel. The subject parcel and other parcels around it are currently accessed by Caswell Lane. There are two parcels that are highlighted in yellow where the easement subject of the request connects to those parcels, that are currently accessed through an unpermitted access road through Forest Service parcels, which are the green parcels there. And so, one of the things we look at when reviewing an abandonment request is if the request is going to impact legal access opportunities for surrounding parcels that are needed for some reason. And so, we did reach out to the Forest Service, and what they indicated in their comments is that the existing unpermitted access to the parcels in yellow can potentially be legalized if other legal accesses are infeasible. And so, what we see for legal accesses to those parcels right now is the subject easement, and then another easement that basically mirrors it on the other side of the original government patent parcel to the south. And so, in order to retain access opportunities for these two parcels that do not currently have a developed legal access, the staff recommendation is to retain 20 feet of the subject easement and abandon the rest of it, so a partial approval. The significance of the 20 feet, other than, of course, there being less area taken up by the easement, is that it actually changes the way that the setback is measured. So right now, effectively, along the northern part of this property, there's 70 feet from that property line. That's unbuildable because it's either in an easement or it's the front yard setback. With this reduction to 20 feet, that setback would be reduced to 30 feet as measured from the property line, so would recover 40 feet of the property for the owner's use. Looking at the eastern access easement, that easement does not connect to any easements to the north because the easement directly to the north of it was previously abandoned. And then it does connect to an easement on the parcel to the south, but that deadens one parcel down and doesn't provide access to any parcels that don't already have a legal established access. And so, for that reason, accesses are not impacted. There's no detriment that staff can see, and so staff recommends full approval of that aspect of the request. One thing I just want to mention is that there have been a number of public comments regarding the public versus private nature of Caswell Lane, which is the road that this northern easement connects into. And so, I just want to make it clear that the most of Caswell Lane, that northern portion of it that's highlighted in yellow on the screen, is a public road. It is in the government patent easements, which are public access easements. The very southern bit of it, highlighted in green, is, was plotted on a parcel map, and that portion of it is private. So, the bottom bit is private, but the rest of it is a public access. Let's move into the utility easement requests. Again, the request is to reduce those easements to 10 feet. We reached out to the utility providers, and they had no concerns about this reduction. The applicant will be required to work with each utility provider to relinquish their interest in the easement, and so staff recommends approval of this request for both of the easements. Thirteen agencies reviewed this application, and many provided comments. Two provided conditions, which are included in Exhibit A of the staff report. Twelve parcels connected to that easement received notice. And again, the staff recommendation is a partial approval with conditions, and that includes reducing the northern easement, access easement, to 20 feet in width. And this is based on the inability to make a finding of no detriment for the full abandonment of that easement. For the partial approval recommendation, staff can make all three required findings. This is a motion for your consideration, and I am happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here, and I believe has some remarks to share.
Okay. If the applicant would like to make a presentation, that would be a good time.
Thank you very much. I'm Mark Gunderson. I'm representing the Travis family in this particular matter. Understanding we have just a very short period of time, the easement on the northern part of the Travis property should be fully abandoned. We appreciate what the staff has found with regard to a 20-foot abandonment, but we think it should be fully abandoned. And the reason for that is that, as it sits today, there's no use of this easement. It is a difficult piece of property. It's likely unbuildable. Nobody for 40 years has done anything with this, and it's just a problem. What the staff pointed out, and I don't think pointed out fully in its recommendation, is that there's a southern access easement, which is far better. It's being used currently. So all of the persons that are being affected with regard to this access easement have access, and they have that access, and will continue to have that access. This northern easement is the one that should be abandoned, and it will be no detriment to the public in any manner or fashion. So to be simple, the complainants are not entitled to the easement of their choice. They are entitled and allowed to have easements access by law, and that is one access easement. And they will have that. So the northern access easement, in our view, should be fully abandoned. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to open up, oh, wait, does anybody have any questions for the applicant or for staff? Okay, I'd like to open up public comments. Do we have any public comment on the matter?
In chambers, I have Bonnie Warner.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the due consideration you have given. I'd like to make note that this is a beautiful property.
Please just state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Bonnie Warner.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, dear.
I'd like to state that this is a beautiful property, and the easement that is in question is filled with boulders and trees, and the terrain is not conducive to easily make a road of any kind, and to do so would be to the detriment of the beauty and integrity of this beautiful piece of property. It is sitting right underneath the Mount Rose Vista, and having more traffic can impact the property adversely. So I'd like to request that the commissioners find in favor of a full abandonment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Harold Schambach, followed by Dimitri Karpov.
Good evening. My name is Harold Schambach. I live fairly close to this area, and I can't understand why this is even being brought up, or they even took the application. Because I had a meeting with Mike Clark and Dave Solaro, I don't know, whenever it was, last year, and Dave Solaro had did some investigating, and he told, I told him, I said, "There's no access to these properties that is legal." And he said, "I know, because the Forest Service owns the areas where they're using a access to it." And I said, "Well, how can you sell pieces of property when there's no access?" And he said, "No, there is access, and that's through what you're talking about tonight." The, the property owner to the north of this property got an abandonment, partial abandonment, which I can't understand either, because at some point in the future, that's going to be a thoroughfare going through, which Dave Solaro had told me. So I think that this whole thing is kind of a fiasco. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Next, we have Dimitri Karpov, followed by Anna Karpov.
Dear Commission members, my name is Dimitri Karpov. I'm living at the Caswell Lane. We were the first family to move in there two years ago with kids, and it's great to see the community of parents growing on the street. We have concern that if northern easement would not be fully abandoned, that it will be through traffic through our street. It should make it very inconvenient for raising families, and we think there will be more and more families coming with kids to the street, and we are fully supportive for the full abandonment of easement.
Hello, dear Commission members. My name is Anna Karpov. I live across the street at 155855 Caswell Lane. We moved there about two years ago, and I came to support the Travis family in the full abandonment of the easement. Our population of the Caswell Lane is getting younger and younger with each year, and we practice to celebrate big holdings of kids around the property, on the street, building the community there, and we would be appreciated to have like a very safe Caswell Lane as we have it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Thomas Fusso, followed by Nancy Davis.
You're not on this item? Okay. We'll wait for the end of that. Thank you so much. We actually have Nancy Davis, followed by Edwards Devenries.
Hello, my name is Nancy Davis. I live at 6,000 Rose Rock Lane, and I am just to the east of where the property we're talking about. And originally, this was part of Sierra Country Road. If you went from Thompson Lane all the way over to Caswell, in the old maps, it was designated as Sierra Country Road. It just, since some of this Forest Service land was not developed, it just was never put through. We are in support of the county staff recommendation and oppose the abandonment. 10 feet isn't going to make a whole lot of difference in that piece of property. There's only two properties that are impacted, and that is myself and my next-door neighbor. And Caswell dead-end, so there's not going to be a lot of through traffic at all. This would just be for two other residences just for access, because as Kat said, this was put in, I'm not really sure why, the county-approved building permits, when we are accessing, the road that we use to get in is Forest Service land. We aren't supposed to be driving on it. If this abandonment goes through, we're completely landlocked. So if we're in, we can't get out, and if we're out, we can't get in. So we, there's a little bit of a conundrum there. We just want access to our property, and we're talking about, I don't even think it's 300 feet. So it would not impact anybody except give us access. And I believe the county, and we've talked to the people here at the county, at the Planning Commission, and they said we have the right to have access to our property through that easement. And that is all I have to say, and so I vote to oppose the abandonment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Edwards Devenions, followed by Alana Wild.
Good evening. My name's Ed Devenons. I have lived at 1595 Caswell Lane, along with my wife Nancy, for 40 years. We have three daughters there. I'm in support of the easement abandonment applied for by Nikolai and Louise Travis, who recently purchased their home at 15870 Caswell. I understand that Barrett and Catherine Young object to this easement abandonment, hopes that they can use it as access to Caswell Lane instead of using Rose Rock Lane, that they have been and are currently using as access to their property. I also object to the use of the easement as access to Caswell by Rose Rock residents for the following reasons. We'll stick with the Youngs. They purchased their property knowing and using Rose Rock Lane as access. They acquired mortgage to buy that property. There was building permit issued for that property using Rose Rock Lane. Now to try to come up with this excuse to say, "Oh, we don't have legal access to our property except through Caswell." There's been a road maintenance agreement on Rose Rock since 1993, and it's recorded in Washoe County. The parties simply failed to obtain a special use permit from the Forest Service for use of that road, which borders and traverses U.S. Forest Service land. This is not uncommon, especially when you have these small parcels. Now, keep this in mind. Those properties, these BLM properties, were transferred from BLM to the Forest Service in about 1988, I believe it was. And now, mind you, they've got a 1993 Rose Rock Maintenance Agreement, okay? So this, it's not like this is a brand-new situation we have here. Forest Service acknowledges the existence of Rose Rock, as evidenced by a 2011 survey, which they did, showing the road, as well as personal discussions with Forest Service personnel. They've provided documentation of two options to the Youngs and Washoe County. Special use permit information, as well as potential public road information, it's called an FR TA. They're willing to process either application according to the Fed, Federal regs 36 CFR 225154, a special use permit application to the private users, or an application by Washoe County to make Rose Rock a public road. Either option, upon approval, requires, provides legal access via Rose Rock for the Youngs and other users, as they've been using for 30 years without the absurd disturbance of an easement through a landscaped yard that only leads to a private road, which will not be expanded for additional users.
Thank you, sir. You only have three minutes. That's all we're allowed. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to go on for a minute if I could.
I can't give you a whole minute. I'll let you finish your real quick thought that you're talking, but I can't give you, I can't give you a bunch of extended time.
Okay, I would like to just point out a couple of things.
Just real, real quick.
Okay, there's about six maps filed of record in the county that show Caswell as a private road. It's never been public. It never will be public. And part of that map is incorrect because it shows that the Forest Service land is public out in front of that. There is no, the small-track easement out to the middle of that road. There's a number of errors in that staff report. And I hope, I hope you will find the reasonable decision here, and allow that easement, and just have the Davises and the Youngs go ahead and apply to the Forest Service, along with the county if they'd like. But that's the access to their properties, always has been.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Alana Wild, followed by Barrett Youngs.
Good evening.
Hi, please state your name for the record.
Alana Wild. I live at 15925 Caswell Lane, so it's at the southern end of the property. I did submit public comments to Kat, so she does have those on record, so I don't really have anything new to add to those. Just wanted to provide my support in the full abandonment request for the easements in question. When we purchased our house, we were under the assumption, saw documentation, it was a private street, there was a road maintenance agreement. All of the homeowners are in charge of maintaining, and that includes snow removal, of course. So, the Youngs, in their original statement, I think, said that they wanted to explore this easement due to snow piling up in the wintertime, not having access to their property without having large equipment come in and do that. We are under no different circumstances than they are through Rose Rock Lane. We are all in charge of maintaining the road and access for snow. We provided some pictures that show the amount of snow that we do get at this level up there. Also, wanted to acknowledge that the Forest Service is willing and able to hopefully provide them a legal access through Rose Rock, and I hope that that's the path forward that we can all come to an agreement for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Barrett Youngs, followed by Josie Travis.
Hi, my name is Barrett Young. I own 6020 Rose Rock Lane, along with my wife and two kids. We are the direct property to the east of the easement in question. It's the only known legal access. It's been noted that we could pursue special use permits, but that does not provide long-term future proof. We would like the county to ensure that we have access. We can't rely on the U.S. Forest Service or sales of those properties as we've seen throughout the county to maintain that. If something changes, we'll be landlocked. We've had good relations with all our neighbors on Caswell up to this point, and we look forward to joining their families with our family and creating a larger community. We support, we support and thank Kat for showing up and visiting all affected houses and easements. We agree that if they feel, the county feels that 20 is enough space for public access, or for private access for our two families, and also the use of the utilities and service of the utilities, some of which on our property actually provide electrical to Caswell Lane. So not only are the utility companies forced to drive a unsanctioned road, but they're taking care of Caswell Lane via our property, and there's no legal access to do that. So we just... So we just want to keep solutions and resolution open, so we're future-proof, and we can all live in this community safely. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
And lastly, in chambers, I have Josie Travis.
Hello. My name is Louise Travis, and I would like to thank Kat for all of her time and all of her energy on this project. It's definitely, it's been, it's been very time-intensive. So one of the things that's in your packet that I wanted to bring your attention to is comments from our surveyor, Randy Meyer, regarding topography concerns. It would cost at least $300,000 to put a road on the northern easement due to a very sharp elevation change. You have that in your packet. I'm not going to waste your time and also attempt to speak to words from a professional surveyor. Easements, the northern easement, and I'd also like to address the southern easement, they have never been developed. It's been over 45 years. There's mature trees. It goes toward the tranquility of that street. And also furthermore, I would like to address the special-use permit. They already have a maintenance agreement dating back to 1993. We have communication with the Forest Service, include Marnie Bones-Steal, as well as Mr. Matthew Zemstein. They have been actively pursuing an application from these people in order to be able to make their access legal. So the Forest Service is reaching out to them to help them fill out their application. In that documentation that the Forest Service provided, they are very aware that that road has been there for more than 30 years. They do have established access. I would like it to be considered that instead of attempting to attack the tranquility that we have on Caswell Lane through not just one, but two easements, both of which should be protected, it's not a matter of what is easiest, it's about what's right, and attacking that is not an appropriate thing. Going through the proper channels and, and pursuing a special-use permit, all of which the, the Forest Service has, has provided to them, both the application, the, an RMA that is approved and vetted by the Forest Service. The Forest Service has been actively giving them this information and encouraging them to apply. Thank you for your time. I really appreciate it.
There is no further public comment in chambers? Or hands raised via Zoom?
All right. With that, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Do we have any questions, comments? Go ahead.
Commissioner Lazarewski, a question for counsel. It was brought up in public comment, the possibility that the county might have a role to play in petitioning the Forest Service to legalize the current access road. Is that something that the county does?
Commissioner Lazarewski, through the chair. I'm not aware of the county having done something like that previously, so I don't, I don't think that I'm necessarily the best person to answer that question. I also don't know if the county would have standing to do that. So unfortunately, just like off the cuff, I don't know that I can adequately answer that question.
I appreciate what you had to say. For staff, Kat. The proposed motion that you have before us, if and when the residences to the east did receive legalized access through the Forest Service parcels, would, would there be anything stopping the current proponents of the abandonment from coming back and receiving full abandonment of the access easement, once the neighbors have legalized their current access?
Kat Oakley, for the record. No, there'd be nothing stopping an application for the full abandonment of that easement. And obviously, if we received that application, we would again send it to agency review and do our full review to, to address the, and analyze the circumstances at that time, and then provide a recommendation based on that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yes. Kat, I'm a little confused. Whenever I've purchased property, and we have the easements, I have the right to use that easement, but that doesn't necessarily mean if it's not in my title policy, I really don't have the right for the usage of the easement. So currently, where are they, if you could show me on a map, where are they currently getting access to this property? And do they have that in their title policy?
Kat Oakley, for the record. So the purple
Go ahead.
line there indicates the unpermitted access through Forest Service parcels. That's known, it's an extension of Rose Rock Lane, that's how it appears on map. So it's known as Rose Lock Lane, Rose Rock Lane, and it goes to those yellow parcels that have those connecting easements to Caswell. So that's where the current access is.
Is that what they're physically using today?
Yes. That's what's being physically used. I am unable to answer any questions about what is or is not in their title policy.
And so they want to abandon that?
No. So the abandonment request is for the parcel to the west of the yellow parcels, and they want to abandon the access easement along the northern property line that traverses their property and provides a connection between Caswell Lane and the yellow highlighted properties to the east. So the, in other words, the property owners who have access currently through Forest Service parcels are not the people requesting the abandonment.
Okay. So they're, they're currently using the easement for access, yet it fronts on Caswell Lane.
So they, currently, they are using the, the unpermitted access for access physically. And there are two undeveloped access easements. One is the subject of this request, and one is on an adjoining property. Those are legal access easements that are not currently developed or utilized as such.
So they, they have, they have the right for the undeveloped access easements that are no longer, that are not developed? So by abandoning the easement, what are, what are you getting?
So the, an impact of the full abandonment of that northern easement, it would be that it would eliminate a legal access opportunity to those yellow parcels. Obviously, the, the benefit for the applicants is that it frees up that part of their property, and it would prevent an access from being developed through that portion of their property.
Okay. One follow-up. And what does that do to the, to the residents around the property?
As
Does anybody get landlocked?
Kat Oakley, for the record. Nobody gets landlocked if it's fully abandoned. There is an access easement, again, on that southern property that connects to the, the properties that currently access through Rose Rock. Staff's concern about that is that since there is not a legally, a developed legal access, it, we would want to maintain all opportunities for that access at this time, so that a legal access can be developed. Once it is developed, of course, it could be reconsidered for the circumstances as they are at that time, but maintaining those opportunities for legal access.
What does it take to get legal access?
The, so, there are two ways this, those yellow parcels could potentially have a developed legal access. One, they could develop an access through one of the existing public access easements. That could be the subject easement, or the one on the adjoining property, and that would require the construction and development of that, that easement. The second way is getting that Forest Service special-use permit, which the Forest Service said they could grant if the existing legal accesses were proved infeasible. And so where we are now is, of course, a situation of not knowing whether or not the Forest Service would grant or will grant that request. And so those are the two potential pathways towards a legal access being developed to those properties.
Okay. That's not our responsibility to do, is it?
It is not.
Thank you.
Good. Do you have anything, Jim?
No.
Kat, I got a question. Can we pull up the accessories parcel map of that we're talking about, please?
Do you want the overhead, or the?
Yeah, some, something a little bit. Do you have anything any bigger? That's, no, I wanted to get the, the color photo.
Okay.
I thought, I thought I saw one. Is that, that
That might be the best one.
Is that the only one that you have? Okay.
Um.
There you go. That's the one. Okay. So the person that's requesting the abandonment is in the blue, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And on the north side, the top side, that's what we're talking about, right?
Correct.
That, right? And then the person that is worried about the access is behind that, on those two parcels right there. And they're getting access, it looks like, from that road going right up there, and then going to the right. And I think that's called Rose
Rose Rock, or something.
Yeah. Rose Rock, right. So they're getting access from there. So the road in front of the blue is the, the Caswell Lane one. So we're only talking about, there's not even a road on, on that property that accesses those properties behind it. So we're only talking about a little bit of a, an access easement right there on the top. It's not even being used right now, just for a point of clarification. And I'm correct, right?
Kat Oakley, all that is correct.
Just want to make sure you're clear. Good?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. All right. If we don't have any other questions, I'm okay with a full abandonment personally on this, but I would go with either, either approval on it. You're right, they can come back, but I'll leave it up to you guys, whatever, whatever you guys feel.
Commissioner Lazarewski, I, in the absence of currently-developed legal access, I would not be able to make finding B of no detriment for a full abandonment. I think staff's recommendation for a partial abandonment kind of threads the needle on maintaining the opportunity for legalized access there, while also giving the applicant significantly increased use of their property. So I'm happy to make a motion on that, if there's no further discussion.
Go ahead.
I move that after giving reasoned consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission partially approve abandonment case number WAB 24-0008 for Suite Clover Residential Trust, retaining a 20-foot-wide public access easement along the northern property line, with the conditions included as exhibit 8 to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code, Section 110.806.20.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Barnes, I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Okay. You want to make the next one? No. All right. Sorry. I was reading it wrong. Yeah. Good.
Mr. Chair, would you mind if I read the appeal?
Yeah. Go ahead, read the appeal procedure, please.
All right. Again, most decisions rendered by the Planning Commission are appealable to the Board of County Commissioners. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning Commission and qualify as an aggrieved person or party, you may appeal in writing within 10 calendar days from the date that the decision being appealed is reduced to writing filed with the Secretary of the Planning Commission and mailed to the original applicant in the proceeding being appealed in accordance with Washoe County Code. Please call the planning staff immediately at 775-328-3610 for information on the appeal procedure and the application fee.
All right. Thank you. So that brings us on to 8B. It's another abandonment case number, WAB 25-0002, for the Mandeville abandonment for possible action. Mr. Lloyd, would you please announce that?
If you give me one moment, I will be presenting for Chris, for these two items.
Oh, oh, sorry. Do you want me to read it while you're going up there? Okay. So this one is for hearing discussion and possible action to approve an abandonment of Washoe County interest in a 33-foot-wide access utility easement on the south side of the parcel, and a 16-foot portion of a 33-foot-wide access and utility easement on the north side of the parcel. Presenting is Mr. Lloyd, in the place of Mr. Bronzick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Trevor Lloyd, Planning Manager, with Planning and Building Division. And unfortunately, Chris was unable to attend tonight. I will be presenting on his behalf. The item before you, as the chairhead indicated, is for a, I got the wrong one, for an abandonment, similar to the last application. These are government home site access easements on this property. The subject property is located at 1600 Tauss Lane, and to give you a little better perspective, it, again, is a government home site, one acre in size. In the southwest rocky meadows, it has a regulatory zone of low-density suburban. So the, the request is to approve an abandonment of, of Washoe County's interest in a 33-foot-wide access easement utilities on the south side of the, the subject property, as well as the abandonment of 16 feet of a portion of a 33-foot-wide access and utility easement along the north side of that parcel. So to provide some perspective, the, the subject property has existing two, existing easements to it. As you can see in, shown on the, in the center there, with the, the surrounding in the blue, the subject property accesses off of a private drive off of Tauss Avenue, or Tauss Lane. As shown in the, the highlighted sections above on the site plan, the applicant is asking to, to abandon 16 feet of the northerly access easement, and all of the southerly, 33-foot of access easement to the south. Following the, the middle of this application, staff met with the neighbor of, of this subject property, and I should point out, the neighbor owns both parcels, both east and west of the subject parcel. So he essentially owns both the properties. He sandwiches the, the subject property in the middle. And so based on this conversation, the applicant had indicated that their intention is to utilize the paved access along the southerly portion, that's off of Tauss Lane, rather than the dirt road, which is to the north, and for that reason, adamantly requested retaining that access easement, but was willing to support the partial abandonment of 13 feet. So they would retain 20-foot access of that, that subject property. Staff is in support of the neighbor's request, and, and as such, is recommending partial approval of the abandonment, subject to retaining the 30, the 20 feet of access easement along the southerly par, access easement, as well as the initial request to abandon the 16 feet of the northerly access easement. Based, with that modification, the partial approval, staff can make all three of the, the required findings, and offers the following motion for your consideration. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you. To the applicant present, would they like to make a presentation? Nope. They're passing. Okay. Do we have any questions for, for Trevor? No? Okay. Then let's open up public comment. Do we have any public comment on the matter?
I have one public comment in chambers by H. William Brooks.
Mr. Chairman, I am H. William Brooks, property owner of a budding parcels, APN 142260 O6 and O8, on both the east and west sides of the Apisens parcel, as has been noted. I am in support of the staff I am in support of the staff's recommendation of partial approval with conditions as presented. This will allow abandonment of 13 feet of the existing 33-foot easement along the southern property line, thereby retaining a 20-foot remainder access easement to perpetuate the uniformity of existing roads and utility access for neighboring parcels, namely mine.
Thank you.
No further public comment in chambers?
There is no public comment on Zoom.
All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Does anybody have any questions, comments, discussion? No? Okay, I'll open it up for a motion. Who wants to make the motion this time? You're making too many. You can't, it doesn't matter. Did you want to make a motion this time?
Sure.
Somebody.
Commissioner Barnes, I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve abandonment case number WAB 25-0002 for the abandonment of a 16-foot portion of the access easement along the northern border of the parcel and the abandonment of a 13-foot portion of the access easement along the southern property line for William C. Mandeville Family Trust, with the conditions included as Exhibit 8 to this matter, having made all three findings in accordance with Washoe County Code Section 110.806.20.
Great, and I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that brings us on to C, amendment of conditions, case number WAC 25-0004 for prana extension of time for WSUP 22-0037 for possible action. For hearing discussion and possible action to approve an amendment of conditions for a special use permit, case number WSUP 22-0037, prana solar. The amendment of condition is for a two-year extension representing Washoe County. It's Mr. Lloyd in the place of Chris Bronzick.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, Trevor Lloyd with Planning and Building Division. This is a request for an extension of time for a special use permit that was heard by this board in February of 2023. The subject property is located in the area of Flanagan in the high desert, well, north of Reno. It is, again, it's immediately abutting the California state line. The property has a regulatory zone of general rural in the high desert planning area, surrounded by essentially undeveloped privately-owned parcels. Again, for your reminder, the request as approved by the board was for an energy production, renewable energy production photovoltaic facility with a generating capacity of 65 megawatts and 125 megawatts of battery storage, a 345 KV substation associated grading and some modification to the parking and height standards. Again, this is a request to extend the life of this special use permit, to extend until February 10 of 2027. The subject site is before you. It bisects the, I'm sorry, it is bisected by the Union Pacific Railroad. And the rationale that the applicants provided is that there was an approved agreement, a large generator interconnection agreement, but that was with the previous investors who have since pulled out, and new investors have been secured, requiring the need for negotiations with a new agreement. So the additional time is needed to put that agreement into place. This property was properly noticed according to the code and state statutes, and staff is able to continue to make all of the appropriate required findings and offers the following motion for your consideration.
Wonderful, thank you. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
The applicant, I believe they're available by Zoom, but they don't have a presentation.
Okay, wonderful. With that, we'll open it up for public, or does anybody have any questions? We'll open it up for public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I don't have any public comment, but Charles Hooper, who is the applicant, does have his hand raised?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead and unmute, Charles.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay, terrific. Yes, I'm the landowner, and I concur what has just been said by Mr. Lloyd and...
Could you unmute again, Charles? I apologize, I muted you by accident.
Okay, no problem. So at any rate, yes, we request this two-year extension, and we plan to pursue this project. And I will answer any questions that any of the commissioners may have.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, with that, I'll count that as the applicant presentation, a question or a comment, sorry. So let's open up public comment. Do we have any public comment?
I have no public comment in chambers, no public comment on Zoom.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Does anybody have any questions or discussion, anything? All right, does somebody want to make a motion? I'll open it up for a motion.
Commissioner Lazarewski, I move that after giving reason and consideration to the information contained in the staff report and the information received during the public hearing, the Washoe County Planning Commission approve amendment of the conditions, case number WAC 25-0004 for prana energy with the conditions included as Exhibit 8 to this matter, having reaffirmed all five findings in accordance with the Washoe County Code Section 110.810.30.
Wonderful, this is Rob, I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Thank you. That brings us on item number nine, the chair and commission items. Any future agenda items? Does anybody have any requests from information from staff? Do we have anything that's been overturned or anything like that? No?
No, the board in March, they did, they heard the first readings for both the package 2.5A of the housing initiatives, as well as the amendments to Article 610 for final subdivision maps. Both are scheduled to be heard April 8th next week at the BCC. That's all I have.
Wonderful. All right, report on previous planning commission items? Well, look at those, all right. Information from staff, they didn't get to 10A, but that's fine. Legal information, anything from legal?
Nothing from me tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more public comment? Do we have any public comment?
No public comment in chambers, no public comment on Zoom.
All right, with that, then it is officially 6:58. Meeting is adjourned.